So to begin for today, we have, as you know, our county council. Chair, I guess this is chair, not president, Denise Durkis, and she's going to be talking with us. If you have questions, please put them in the chat and our procedure will be to have Denise present. And then we will, I will read the questions and she will answer them and. You can always go like this, although I can only see so many people, but I may be able to finish that. Okay? Thank you all. Go Denise. Thank you for coming.
All right. Well, thank you to the League of Women Voters for inviting me to speak today. At the Lunch with the Leader, I'm honored to have the opportunity to speak to you about council, county council matters. I'd like to start with a brief mention about our strategic planning exercise. Which occurs every January. This year, council took a new direction. In establishing five overarching goals with supporting strategic priorities. So the five overarching goals we agree to are quality governments, operational excellence. Economic vitality, quality of life, and environmental stewardship. And under each of these goals, we identified multiple new priorities that build on our past priorities. And our final planning document should come back to council for approval at our February seventh meeting, so. We'll be working on that to bring it back for that meeting. With this framework, county staff will now be able to proceed with building a public dashboard. To track performance on the county's new website, which is currently under development. So this leads then into the first topic that the league asked me to address, and that is transparency. So in our decision making, council follows the requirements of the New Mexico Open Meetings Act. All council decisions are made by public vote and must pass with a majority of four affirmative votes. So each councillor cannot discuss upcoming votes with more than a subquorum of two other councillors. So we typically do not know how any vote controversial or otherwise will play out at any upcoming meeting. Interestingly, these restrictions do not apply to our state legislatures. So it would be nice if we could discuss things behind the scene in my perspective, but that is not in compliance with the Open Meetings Act. So that is how we function. Council does meet occasionally in closed session to discuss legal or personnel matters, but all votes are take, always taken in an open session. So in each January, at our first meeting of the year, council adopts a resolution. Establishing the minimum standards of reasonable notice to the public for all meetings of the council. As well as meetings of county boards, commissions, and other bodies created by the council. And which currently number seventeen. I won't name all seventeen, but. The best known ones are the Art in Public Places Board, Board of Public Utilities, Environmental Sustainability Board. Historic Preservation Advisory Board, Library Board, the Los Alamos Health Council, Parks and Recreation Board, Planning and Zoning Commission. And Transportation Board. There are also currently ten county working groups, which are not subject to the provisions of the Open Meetings Act. So they have much more flexibility in their meeting schedule and, and how they conduct their meetings. The agenda for all regular meetings of council, as well as for the boards and commissions. Are made available at least seventy-two hours prior to the meeting. So for a Tuesday evening council meeting, the agenda is posted on the county's website by close of business the previous Friday. And once the agenda is posted, we councillors begin doing our homework to prepare for the upcoming meetings. In this January, the tickler, which includes a detailed list of agenda items for upcoming meetings. Is now being included in council agenda packets. So from councillor's perspective, we are being transparent and are in compliance with the Open Meetings Act. But I'm certainly interested in hearing from all of you regarding what more the public would like us to do with respect to transparency. Excuse me a minute. Okay, so the next topic I was asked to address is public comment and feedback. So council accepts comments from the public at the beginning and end of each meeting. And also before every vote during the meeting, in accordance with the council's procedural rules. These rules are reviewed by our Rules Committee, which consists of three councillors. And they are approved by the full council. Council also receives emails from constituents and protocol calls for the chair to respond on behalf of council. Although council, individual councils may also respond on their own. Emails are typically more numerous when a controversial topic is coming up for a vote. Every councillor certainly considers these general comments. Comments they receive individually from constituents, any additional public comments at the meeting. As well as the background materials, the presentations, the discussions at the public meeting in determining how to vote on each issue. Occasionally, councils presented with the citizens petition on a particular topic. And in accordance with our procedural rules, council has four options for responding to a petition. We can acknowledge receipt of the petition and take no further action. Or we can acknowledge receipt of the petition and take the requested action or a different action addressing the subject. Or we can refer the, the matter to an appropriate board or commission or council subcommittee. Or we can decide to investigate the subject and set a future date for presentation of additional information, discussion. And possible action. So regarding social media, I would like to note that posting on these platforms is not the most effective way. To voice opinions to council, as not all councillors use social media. Additionally, the county's twenty twenty community survey indicated. That about, only about sixty-nine percent of the county's population visit social media sites. And only about twenty-seven percent actually share their opinions on social media. So people should, the public should bear this in mind, that there is a limited audience on social media. The current survey results, the twenty twenty-two survey are not yet available. So again, I'm interested hearing from, from those of you in this meeting regarding. Handling of public comment. And then the final topic I was asked to address is environmental review of, of. Proposed projects. So the, the county's approach has been. To introduce proposed projects, beginning with a public information meetings. To determine whether there is sufficient interest on a particular project. Before investing significant amounts of county funds. So once public interest is determined, then the county will bring in external consultants with relevant expertise. With respect to our trails, the county is initiating a trail inventory based on types and usage. With the intent to improve and better maintain our, our trails for public use. And I would note that plans for the Peblo Canyon Mountain biking trail are on hold. With respect to the golf course, council has approved maintenance for all eighteen holes. To include increasing the fence height at the driving range, but not to include expansion of the course at this time. The county has also formulated a tree mitigation plan. And set aside funds to replace our dying tree canopy. And with younger trees at the golf course and also at Ashley Pond. Are the county's new sustainability coordinator is expected to engage in county wide projects. To help minimize environmental impacts. In other environmental matters, the county is conducting a comprehensive baseline. Greenhouse gas emissions study, from which it will set reduction targets. And again, against which it can measure progress. The county also adopted a green building resolution and an anti idle, idle auto policy. And has banned the use of glycos, glycos, yeah, I'll get it out, glycosate, glycosate. So I would welcome suggestions for other environmental friendly practices. That residents would like us to implement. So this concludes my prepared statements, but I'm happy to answer questions from the audience.
I'm back. I'm looking for my chat. Has anyone written anything yet? No. Well, that's good because I can say something. The rest of you can keep writing. So what is this anti idling? Is that like the buses or we're talking about my car?
So it, it's for county government vehicles, so. And I'm not sure how much broader it is at this point, but certainly it implies, applies to government vehicles.
It's actually, I'll just say it was something I wondered about because when I'm walking my son. The bus, you know, it's on Los Pueblos, and so oftentimes the bus is idling for ten minutes, fifteen minutes. And I always wondered why that would be necessary, but I don't know about mechanics, so maybe it is totally necessary. Also, I noticed that, and again, I'm not saying it's wrong, I'm just saying I don't, I don't know about it, is that. Because we've had nine one one police and firefighters and all at, near my, on my street. They seem to idle and maybe they have to, I don't know that, you know, for an hour. Or more. And, and I don't know because they have a lot of equipment, you know, on their trucks and they may need things. So I'm, I'm just saying, I don't know that, but it just seems like quite a waste when. Everybody, you know, you have three fire engines and two police cars and, you know, the E M, the nine one one people. Just seems like a, a big waste, and that's, I'm talking about for the last thirty years, I'm not even talking about just right now. So I just wondered why that was. Something that we, they did, and it may be a reason, I'm not saying that, but I just wanted to know.
So unfortunately, I don't have the answer to that question, but I will get back to everyone. I'll get back to the league and find out how broadly applied this new policy is and whether it includes the buses.
Yeah, and, and I don't know about firefighting, I mean, they're there to save someone or do something, that's why they're there. But I don't know if they have to be on all the time or some system can go on, but not. The exhaust. So that was my thing. And Becky has a question. She has her hand raised, right Becky?
Yeah, now I've unmuted. So first of all, the anti idle idea, I think is good for encouraging. The public as well, although you can't, I guess, force the public to do that, but I always see people. Parked outside the post office and they just let it idle. Never mind. My main question or comment is. You know, we hire consultants quite frequently, it seems to me. Who are a bit tone deaf to the community, maybe a bit is too mild. Sometimes very tone deaf, and in particular, I found that true with the golf courts consultants. Who just seem to not listen to what people were saying. So I think sometimes our county staff could do a better job. At least ahead of time gauging public opinion. Pueblo Canyon was the other place where the consultants. Came up with plans before they had consulted the public. So I wish there were a better coordination between the staff and the consultants and the public. And you know better Denise than I how that could be achieved, but I think it would surely help. First of all, in respect to how the public feels about the county staff. And in accomplishing the goals that really seem to be important to people. That's a long question. Just have your reactions to those issues. Thank you.
So, so I appreciate those comments. I'm, I'm not sure I heard a question there, they sounded more like suggestions. So yes, indeed counties can do a better job. Of coordinating between staff and, and consultants and try to anticipate. Public reaction, although that's honestly not always possible, that's why they begin with. Public meeting to, to solicit input. But I will certainly pass on these suggestions to staff. For future and ongoing projects. So thank you.
And I'm going to read a, a couple here, this from Kevin, Richard Skolnick. Recently authored a letter asking the county leadership to work on a variety of governance issues to make improvements. What is your reaction to that letter? And, and which is on the posted in the reporter, and what is, what do you. What do they see as any actions the council will take to better understand? And address the issues it raises, and how can citizens help do that?
So I guess I'd like to clarify which letter. Is being referred to, there was a, a letter from Mr. Skolnick regarding a county response. To the internet and telephone outage, is that the, the letter that you're referring to?
Kevin, do you want to just get yourself unmuted and, and answer that? Because I don't know either.
It was the letter having to do with governance issues that went, was sent to all the councillors and. It was either late November or early December. And there, you know, I was, I was a signer honor because I agreed with the, the points he was making. But it's, it, it addressed a number of governance issues. I never really saw any particular reaction to that. I know that. I understand from him the council accepted his input, but, but I'm curious. What the council made of it and whether you're going to try to understand, i- if they don't understand it, whether they're going to try to understand better what he's getting at. And, and try to work on those things.
Okay, so here with me, I'm actually searching for a couple, some of his, his emails. But I would, before I commented on that, I would, I'd really like to have the email in front of me. I know with respect to his most recent email. Guarding the emergency response to. The internet and telephone outage, we. Did respond and indicated the county is working on a plan to be able to notify key personnel. And to inform residents should such an unprecedented extended outage occur again. And this plan will be communicated to residents in the near future and also be included in a presentation to, to county council. So let me see if I can quickly search to find the email. About governance in general.
Councillor Durkis, I just put a link to the letter in the chat box.
Okay, thank you.
It's from Maura, in case you didn't know who said that.
Yes, I recognize her voice. Okay, here we go, I'm pulling it up now, so. And I'm reading, skimming through it. So my. Personal response would be, I think these are excellent recommendations. Council, the, the, both the council and county government can always do better. The suggestions specifically are listening better to the community, be more transparent in decision making. Establish standard procedures for major projects. Ensure that there's an analysis of major projects and hold the county manager accountable for ensuring that staff. Consistently engaging, engage in technical work and with the community and so on. So, yes, I think these are. Excellent recommendations. I don't have a specific response to. What the county can do in these areas. I did touch on the things that we are currently doing. And I did specifically invite suggestions for how you think we can improve in these areas.
So those, we, we should just send those to you or follow ups on, on those various points to you or.
Sure, or better yet, you can send it to all of council. I'm only one of seven votes, so the chair has no more authority than the, than the other six councillors.
Let me, so if we finish that one, Jean, I know you have your hand up. Do you want me to read what you wrote in the chat or did you want to say that? Jean, do it.
I, I could go ahead and speak. Councillor Dirkis, thank you so much for being here today. I would like to recommend, well, let's see, I would like to say that I think the county has done a good job. In meeting the legal requirements of public notice, such things as the seventy-two hour. Requirement of the Open Meetings Act to post agendas and the sorts of things like that. I think, I think you've done a good job at that. However, I think citizens, and this goes dovetails with what Becky Shankland had to say. I think our citizens' primary interaction with the county is with the county staff. And I think the county staff would benefit by some training in public involvement. With some leadership from the council. One specific example is that when the county began the process to update the. Chapter sixteen development code, a steering committee was created to support. The, the consultant, you know, to help them with some ground truth kinds of information about the county. But the steering committee, there was no public knowledge. There was no public outreach to say the steering committee was going to be established, and so that. It was, some people felt like the county staff were just picking their friends in the development community. And so that's an example where some public outreach was really needed. So that citizens could participate and learn about it. In fact, from myself specifically, I sat at the time on the Planning and Zoning Commission. And there was one mention in one meeting of the steering committee. And unfortunately, I was not at that meeting, and the county staff didn't inform all of the P and Z Commission. Of this steering committee. It was going for more than six months before I became aware of it. And as a Planning and Zoning Commission member, I would have really benefited by all of those meetings and discussions. So I think you can look at the, the planning staff, you can look at parks and rec. You can look at community services, the kinds of things Becky Shankland also mentioned where. There is a disconnect, and I think it's because. We have too narrow a view of public involvement. It's more than a seventy-two hour notice of an agenda. So I'd recommend some training in public involvement for our leading county staff. Thank you.
Okay, and thank you, Ms. Stewart. I do appreciate that recommendation. I guess I would have to admit that this, the concerns that you raised are not, this is not the first time that council has heard this. As far as the Development Code Steering Committee, I, I don't recall offhand how many people were on there, but there. Was a diverse group of people with differing viewpoints. Your comments that this committee was not broadly advertised before it was engaged. So I will certainly pass that on and we will make sure that that doesn't happen again in the future. And I also appreciate the, the suggestion for training. I agree, training is always very helpful. And on how to engage with the public that's. Both council and county staff are here to serve the public, so it's important that we effectively engage with them. So again, thank you for your comments and suggestions.
And, and to everyone, I know I see some hands up, but on my iPad, I either can look at this chat. Or look at these hands up, so I'm going to go through these chat ones and then we'll go back, okay? So don't think I'm forgetting you. And so I'm on Reed, who says, thanks Denise for joining us. And wanted to know, could you please tell us in the fewest possible words? Possibly what principles should govern the use of public funds? For investing in things like recreational facilities?
Okay, so. So I'm not sure that I can point to a specific set of principles, but certainly. You know, my approach, and I believe the approach of, of coun- council as a whole, has been to. To look for investments that can benefit broad segments of, of the community. And we have to keep in mind that we have a diverse community. We have small children all the way up to senior citizens. And it's important to provide services and facilities for these various segments. Unfortunately, some public projects are more costly than others. So we can't approach it in terms of specific, only specific amounts of dollars for each project. We do have to, have to consider just the cost of the facilities. But yeah, I mean, as I said, my personal perspective, and I believe all of councils, is to provide a balanced approach. To serve the broad spectrum of the community so that no particular segment is neglected. I mean, one of the things that comes to mind is the. Trying to think what it's called, the, a, a center for middle, middle school students. The council, the county has facilities for young students, it has facilities for, for teens. But the middle school students have, don't have their own space. So we are still looking into that and exploring some options, and hopefully we can come up with a solution in the near future. So I hope that answers your question.
Are you okay with that read? I'm hearing, so I'm gonna say yes. So, or at least for now. From O'Connor, when the chapter sixteen development code was approved, it was with a side note. That the council was aware that there were some serious problems with the rezoning. And that you would revisit the zoning in January. Do you know when that's going to happen?
Let me see if I can pull up the tickle. We did give them a specific deadline. I don't recall offhand exactly what that deadline was, but in the. County kept the zoning maps separate from the development code. So that they could be amended without having to go back and do a whole ordinance to amend the code. So the, some of the things that come to mind were the open spaces and the different categories. Of, of open spaces, so I anticipate that they'll come back with recommendations on that. There were also requirements to come back with. Additional parking recommendations, this doesn't involve. Additional parking recommendations. This doesn't involve rezoning, but. Because this was, I believe it's like a two hundred fifty page document. Council felt that it was ready to be approved, but acknowledging that it is a living document and anticipating that. Changes would come back in the future. Not only the ones that were specifically requested, but anticipating that as they implement. The new code, they may. You know, other issues may reveal themselves.
Okay, and this one is, is from Jody Benson. I fully support the tree mitigation project. I request, however, we don't cut down the grand old aging cottonwoods and Chinese elms downtown. And around the pond. I join many others in town to want to make Los Alamos a tree city as described by Arbor Day. Rather than just hiring someone to cut old brown trees and plant new saplings. Finally, I hope you got that Denise. Finally, we need to remember that we are committing to. Becoming a B, B E E city. All these require expert planning with people who understand externalities. We've got them here. So it's your turn.
Okay, so, yes, I certainly appreciate your comments about tree mitigation. It's not the county's intention to cut down these old trees. But some of them do have dead branches and they certainly would have to be pruned. If trees die, they certainly would have to be removed. But in anticipation of the deteriorate, further deterioration of these aging trees. The county, the county does plan to start. Planting some young trees so that they can. Grow and be ready to replace the other trees when they do die. It's just preparing for the, the normal cycle of, of tree life in the county. So the, I will pass on the comments, suggestions about the B city experts. I am aware of. The, of the county's. Engagement in becoming a tree city, but I, I would have to confess that I don't have more details about it at this time. So, thank you for those comments and suggestions.
By the way, I just, I'm just gonna add a question to this one. So. Do, does the county kind of sort of a regular basis go around and check the health of? Various trees that are in, not so much someone's yard, but. Around that could fall. And I only say that because we had a tree which we thought was fine and. The last wind, it was about a year ago though, but. You know, the tree fell over. It's like, oh my gosh. And apparently it had been rotting, but we didn't know that because we didn't do anything and nor did we check it. So let me. Put blame where it belongs. But I just wondered in terms of. Trees along the edges or, or where people are on public property. County property. Do we, do we have someone who kind of checks their health every once in a while?
So, yes. Staff do. Incorporate that into, you know, the treatment maintenance project. I don't know what the schedule is and I really can't speak to how detailed. Their examination is. I don't know if they personally inspect each tree. Along public ways or if they're just looking. For obvious signs of, of. Deterioration. I'd have to look into that to get more info, information for you.
Well, I, I, that just brought up the thought, you know, like even on the golf course, you don't, we don't want some tree just falling over and on the golfer. Anyway, just a comment. Let me go on with, this is June Fabrica Martin. Just a comment, but this is a pet peeve of mine. To me, transparency in government. Means that the rationale for any final decision is clearly expressed to the public. Particularly when an issue is at all controversial. Constituents need to know what consideration was most compelling for each of the individual decision makers. Our county council generally does a good job in this case, but occasionally a counselor will vote. Without providing such an explanation. This is particularly problematic when theirs is the only dissenting vote. And the public is left wondering what was unsaid or what is going on behind the scenes. Denise, you might. Might you pass this on this request to other councillors?
Okay, so, yes, thank you for the suggestion. I will pass that on to other councillors. But there actually is not a requirement for a councillor to justify their vote. Or to explain why they're voting or plan to vote a certain way. I mean, personally, I do always try to explain why I'm voting. I can recall. One time that I did not explain, explain my vote. It was in an appeals case and we were anticipating that the appeal would be challenged. So. I, I chose not to explain my vote at that time, but. I will certainly pass this, these suggestions on to all the councillors. But again, it actually is not a requirement, but I would agree it's a good practice.
And, and, you know, we'll put my two cents worth into it. It's really great to be in charge of this. But I, I know that, you know, when people have spoken like. I really think we should do this because blah, 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 or the opposite. And then you vote, it's, it's, that's fine. You can just say yes, no, and we know why, because you've already. Pointed out, but sometimes someone doesn't say anything and then just says a vote, whether it's yes or no. But against the majority and you think, and why are you doing this? So I'm right there with you. Okay, Reed says, thank you. And. Kevin, okay, I'd like to see the county engage with Parrito Conservation Alliance. Parrito Trails Roundtable as a routine early step in any proposal or project with potential implications. For open space and trails. It would bring early input and feedback from a broad set of different kinds of trails and open space users. What do you think of championing this idea?
So I certainly welcome this suggestion. The more input we have upfront on a project, the better from my, my perspective. I would appreciate if you'd send me the, the points of contact for these organizations and I'd be happy to share them with county staff.
Okay, Kevin, that's yours. Okay, this is Eduardo. Council has a long tradition of deferring to. What happened here? Of deferring to staff recommendations, staff perspectives, priorities. And differ from those of citizens. How will you, as chair, encourage non-confrontational, critical thinking among council?
So. I, I mean, personally, I do a lot of homework to prepare for, for upcoming council meetings. We get, as I indicated in my opening comments, we, we do receive the packets on Friday evening. So we. Do painstakingly, I, painstakingly review all of the materials. On Monday and Tuesday, we have an opportunity to inquire. From staff to get more information if necessary. There is a lot of reading that has to go on behind the scenes to be able to. Be fully informed and make an informed decision. So. The, and I, I mean, as a practice on my own, I do try to reach out to people throughout the community. I do have. From both parties, by the way, I do have some contacts. That I do try to reach out to so that I can get a sampling of what different people. In the community are thinking on things. The. I, I, I will have to admit that yes, the staff recommendations do carry a significant weight. They do have the background and have done the, the groundwork on most of these things. But council does not always. Fa- follow the recommendations from staff. So it is a balancing act there. And it is really upon each individual councillor to do their homework and, and be prepared and informed. Before they vote.
Okay, I have two more little comments and I'm going to read from the chat and then we'll go to people who have your hands raised. Because on my screen, I can only do one of the other. So. Didn't, by the way, Kevin says, thanks Denise. I will send the information again and Reed says. Where do we go? A vote explanation doesn't have to be a requirement, but it's certainly an appropriate courtesy. The chair might or could simply prompt a councillor who didn't explain to do so. And so that's just a comment from him. Well, okay, now I, that I said that, Jody wrote, okay. Thanks to the county staff for all the facilities and services that they maintain, even when staffing is stressed. Today, thank them for the snow with ice clearing with the new equipment that grinds up the thick ice and they just came by my house. So that would be great too. So I'm gonna close this chat and then call on people who have your hand raised, okay? So Mara, do you have something? Yes. Can do that. You have to unmute.
Okay, sorry about that. I couldn't unmute. Counselor Dirkus, it's nice to see you on the Legal Women Voters Program. I, I also have questions and suggestions about transparency. I think that many people, and I've tried to discuss this with the county manager and other people. There's a difference between publicity and transparency. So if there's a meeting coming up and the, the county staff puts out a news release saying this meeting is happening on this day at this time. And they put in what the topic is and everything, that's publicity. That's not transparency. Transparency is when members of county staff or councillors are willing to speak to. A member of the press and get their, either their opinion or their. Their ideas or why they're voting a certain way out in, in public. You know, when I was working years ago in Nevada with the press, those county commissioners were, were dying to get their opinion out. Before the meeting, once the word was out that there was a topic, especially if it was going to be. Controversial, they would love to talk to you. Here, people don't seem to realize the difference between transparency and publicity. So. And, and I've brought this up before council under public comment. An example is when. The county manager's report is on the agenda and the county manager discusses issues that are. Very, very important issues under that county manager agenda spot. Where lots of other entities would have put it as a separate agenda item. Because there is no notice to the public that that important item is going to be discussed. As a subtitle or a sub-subject of the county manager's report. An example is the ARPA funds. The demolition at, at the Hilltop House. They did move the COVID report on where it is on the agenda and you can see where that will be, will be reported, but. You know, but I would imagine that on some of these big issues, the county manager or his staff or whoever. Would know on Friday afternoon, we don't get the agenda till late afternoon. That they would know that there was, that some of these things are going to be discussed. At the meetings on Tuesday evenings. I, I'm aware that there have been some topics that councillors have specifically asked to have discussed. And then they, 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 they come up and it's there and then it's gone. And some of those are the. The topics that people are most interested in hearing about. So I'm interested in knowing how you, councillor Dirkus, see the. The difference between publicity and transparency and what you would do as a chair that would. Maybe improve some of these things or, or what would you, what would you do differently to what's been done in the past? Thank you.
So I appreciate your concerns about the level of details in, in the county manager's report. I mean, one of the options that, that councillors would have. Is if after the agenda comes out on Friday, we can. Just thinking here, we can amend the agenda. But we, we, yeah, we have to get it. There's the touchy area there about not giving it a sufficient advance notice that something is going to be discussed. So I. On, on this, I will look into this further and discuss it with the county manager. And see if we can get more things actually called out specifically on the agenda. Particularly those that are likely of, of broader interest to the public. So I appreciate that suggestion. Regarding publicity versus transparency. So, yes, there is definitely a difference. There. Sometimes there are topics that. The county staff are working on that are, I guess for lack of a, a better term, okay, not ready for prime time. So, you know, discussions. Internal discussions that are going about on, say, on a potential land purchase or sale is one thing that comes to mind. Because you wouldn't want to. Interfere with the negotiations. That's about, that's the one thing that I, that I can think of. That I could see some constraints on discussing prematurely. As far as the councillors talking ahead of time about how they're thinking of voting. That gets into that touchy area with the Open Meetings Act because. We, because of the restrictions of. We can't talk about an upcoming agenda item with more than two councillors. If we then. Discuss it with the media. That could potentially be, and, and let's say the media then posts. Comments from four councillors. That, that could lead us into a gray area with. With compliance with the Open Meetings Act. So. I will, I, I will talk about this further with our county attorney. The, I, I mean frankly, the Open Meetings Act really does constrain us in certain areas. And as I did point out, our state legislators. Don't have these constraints. They are free to talk with each other beforehand. Before. An item comes up for a vote. So let me do some more research on that with the county attorney and get back to you. So I appreciate your questions.
Okay, and I, I see two more hands up and I just wanna say one quick thing. So I'm looking at my name. And I see it says Carol Anne Arbister Martinez and I'm thinking, well, how did that get there? And then I think what happens when it automatically. Filled. My sister-in-law is Carolyn Arbister Martinez. That's not me. So I don't, before I get some big thing going on in this county about what's going on, let me just correct that. So let me just make sure that I'm correct here. I have Kyle's hand up first and then James. And, but then for a while, Bob, I saw your hand up. So is it okay for Kyle to go? I think so.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I just want to say thank you Denise for stepping up to be the. Chair. That's not an easy job and I appreciate that you're doing it. Also, I'm glad to hear that most councillors aren't bothering to. Spend a lot of time on social media because I think social media is mostly an open sewer when it comes to county government. But I, the question I have is, do you know what the, the county's policy is on snow days? Cause we had one this week, I think it was on Tuesday. And I was really actually pretty surprised. Does, does the county just do what the lab does or does the county? Make a decision independently of the lab and the schools? And that's what my question's about. Thank you.
So, thank you for that question. Regarding the snow days. The, you know, the council doesn't usually get involved in the day-to-day goings-on of the county. So that is. That fall, that decision falls on the county manager. But my understanding. Is that. The county certainly does look at what the lab and the schools are doing. But the, you know, the decision for the county is certainly an independent decision. Um, but the, you know, the decision for the county is certainly an independent decision. You know, I I live in White Rock, so we actually hardly got any snow down here. But I kept looking at the photos and looking at the weather.com and uh, Los Alamos was certainly getting a lot more than we did. So I I will look into that further and and see what I can find out on exactly um, how the county manager makes that decision. So thank you.
And Kyle, I know that um, I think it's some ungodly hour, like 3:30 AM or 4 o'clock or something like that. Both the school district and the lab do confer on whether or not they're going to have a snow day. Sometimes they, they say, oh, it's a snow day and then there's no snow, but you know, if it's doing something, they have to do it that early. But I don't know about the county, but I'll, I will tell you that about the, I, to my knowledge, unless it's changed, the school district and the lab do confer at some horrible hour. And sometimes they, they make the wrong mistake and sometimes they say no, and then it's horrible because they should have. So you know, it's just one of those, but that's just my comment. So James, do you want to?
Can I just add, can I just add to that? So um, I believe that, you know, their decisions are often influenced by not only what is anticipated at the opening, which would influence a delay, but also if snow is expected to continue throughout the day. Because then they're faced with the situation, okay, they get all the people up here. Um, and then they have to dismiss them them early. So that definitely is factored into the decision-making. Um, I did want to add that I haven't yet seen this new um, grinding equipment for ice. Um, since we haven't had much snow down here in White Rock, so I I look forward to seeing that. Um, but I'd also like to point out that the the county does have a snow removal plan that is approved, I believe annually by the Transportation Board. Um, and it does prioritize um, how the cu- the county will do snow removal. I mean, obviously it focuses on the major streets first, then the um, secondary streets. So there is a a pecking order of of how it prioritizing for it prioritizes um, streeting, uh, cleaning the streets. So I did want to mention that and give credit to the staff and the Transportation Board for um, for those plans. So, okay.
James? Yeah, Jay?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, um, thanks for taking the time to have lunch with us, Chair Dirkus. Uh, it's been helpful. Um, I had a question that I think kind of echoes the sentiments of some other people. Um, and uh, basically it's about uh, government accountability. So more people publicly opposed the recent chapter code update, uh, chapter 18 code update, then supported it, but it was still approved. Um, another example of public opposed funding the Leisure Lagoon, but it was built anyway through SIP funding. Uh, the public wants more local businesses, but the county sometimes makes it difficult or even possible for small businesses while being incredibly accommodating to large businesses. Uh, some examples that come to mind are on court, Smiths, and the Marriott deal. Uh, the most recent community survey that came out asked the public to rate a bunch of things on a scale, but didn't allow people to give context or other comments on these issues. Many members of the public complained that their responses to these surveys get twisted to serve the interests that are not theirs. Uh, the county sometimes justifies its actions to the public with arguments like, well, council voted for it instead of presenting rational and relevant arguments that would show a understandable benefit for taxpayer of why they made that decision. A recent example of this is the new EV charging stations. These are just some examples of how it looks like local government is not accountable to the public. Uh, how do you think government demonstrates its accountability to public or how could it?
Okay, so um, I I would go back to saying, um, we, or to repeat what I said previously, that when council makes its decisions, I mean, it is, it it does call a fall upon each count individual counselor to do their own, to do their research and be fully informed so that they can make an informed decision. The more controversial the topic, the more difficult the decision because the counselor has to weigh the pros and cons, comments from various segments of the population. Um, and so it's not always an easy decision. Um, but you know, we individually have to live with our decisions and if the public doesn't like them, they don't have to reelect us, should should any of us choose to um, to run again. Let me talk about um, some of the things that you mentioned. I'm not sure if I caught all of them. So the survey. Um, uh, yes, I have heard comments that um, there was, there's no opportunity for comment in the survey. I have not spoken personally to the pollsters, but um, the comments are more difficult to measure than the um, the the sliding scale on the survey. So it is, it's easier for um, the pollsters to be able to um, compile the data and present a report on actual numbers or boxes, I forget what the choices were in the uh, the survey. I did not, I was not one of the randomly selected, by the way. Um, I don't think any of the counselors were. Um, so that's the survey and I I I do, would agree that there were some points in the survey. I took it when it was open to the public. Um, that I wanted to say more, I did want a different answer and I certainly plan to communicate that with the the county staff. The Leisure Lagoon. So the the vote, the public vote that was held on the Leisure Lagoon several years back, um, was on a general recreation bond. So what the public objected at that time was actually um, the option to issue bonds to pay for the lagoon. The question was not about whether specifically people wanted that facility or other facilities that were included in the proposed bond. So after the fact, the the county did um, proceed to use capital improvement project funds um, to move forward with the uh, the Leisure Lagoon. Um, that was before my time on council. Um, it was, so um, I don't have more specific details on that one. Um, regarding small businesses, um, the county does have um, uh, well, first, the council does have a a priority for economic vitality and specifically under that a priority about um, um, promoting small businesses. But what the county can do for small business, businesses is constrained to some extent by um, the um, whoops, I had that information. Uh, by the, the anti-donation clause, um, the state's clause. So we have to walk a fine line there and what we, exactly what financial assistance in particular that we can do for individual businesses. Um, one of the things that the county has approved is the um, metropolitan redevelopment area in White Rock. Um, uh, in the White Rock Town Center specifically. And that designation actually does allow for more flexibility um, in um, helping to redevelop um, that area which has been designated, specifically designated as blighted. Um, I don't know if you've been down there recently, but there's lots of um, vacant spaces that buildings have been torn down for years. Um, so that was one of the things that um, council did approve. As I said, that will give it, that does allow for more flexibility in what we can do to help redevelop areas. The um, so also with respect to small businesses, that you know, the county does have a building code and one of the requirements for um, prepping a space for the opening of a new uh, of a new business or a business that's relocating is to have a, is to get a building permit. Um, and it is the um, the the county's chief building inspector, also known as the authority having jurisdiction, the AHJ, um, that um, that manages and and issues these permits. So um, the county, how shall I say this? The county is certainly not trying to hinder people from um, businesses from getting started, but there are um, building requirements that are driven by public health and safety that do have to be, have to be met on um, improvements that are being made to to specific facilities. You mentioned chapter 18. Um, yes, there were um, people in the community who were opposed to that, but um, certainly in my decision-making, I relied heavily, heavily on um, the past, two past surveys that were done um, by the county um, that showed that one survey, I believe it was 20%, the other, I think it was 30% of the people um, opposed uh, the code, which means, which left another 70% who either um, supported the code. Some people actually wanted it to be more strict and more enforcement and others who just had no opinion, who weren't informed. So um, I can't speak for how the other counselors voted, but that certainly influenced my decision. So I think, I think I covered um, your your questions and comments. Uh, if I've missed anything, please let me know. Thank you.
Okay, um, and this, I don't know, James, you know, when I, on my iPad, the the chat takes up the whole screen here, so I can't tell who's on. I think that's Bob. Uh, it is 1 o'clock, I just want to say that. So I'm going to just say a couple of quick things. Um, and then if someone really has a question, we'll just go to maybe that if you're willing to say. Yeah, uh, well, one is, um, this is some more. Uh, does the county attorney's office have a handbook on OMA that the council follows? I don't know.
So um,
Attorneys.
The attorney's office does not have one. There is a handbook that is published by um, the state. I think it comes from the Attorney General's Office. Um, but um, you know, our county attorney is certainly our go-to um, authority when we have questions.
And this last one is just a comment, two comments now. Guys, keep writing. Uh, Jody said, you know what, you should go visit the Leisure Lagoon. It opens at 3 on weekdays and 11 during school breaks because it's mob with kids and grandparents having a screamingly fun time. And to everyone uh, from, remember who's Jay, thank you. Oh, thank you, uh, Chair Dirkus for listening and responding. Very thoughtful, really for a long-winded question. So I'm going to close this and Bob, you.
Can I, can I just went, one closing thing? Please feel free to to contact me or the entire council. Um, it's uh, either our address is on the website. Um, so you can coun- can contact um, all of us on county council with one email or you can write to us individually. And we we do read all of your comments and as I said, um, typically the chair responds on behalf of the full council.
Okay, so can I thank Denise and Kevin says thank you as well and to the league. Thank you, that Kevin. Um, we want to thank you Denise for coming and spending your hour, a little over an hour with us and for answering all these questions. And everyone knows you can write anyone in the council anytime. They have emails and they do look at those. So um, I will say goodbye to everyone. And um, oops, Barbara, let every, let Bob speak. I'm sorry, Bob, I did, you know what? Your hand on my screen is sort of like where that um, your bookcase is and I couldn't see it. So I apologize to you. I'm sorry.
It's fairly irrelevant. I just wanted to make a fun uh, closing comment about trees concerning Jody's comment, namely, when you do have to cut down an old tree, um, you might consider putting out bids for a sculptor to carve it.
I will pass on that suggestion.
You could save money because you wouldn't have to take the tree out and the money you saved, you could give to the artist.
Thank you.
Okay, we're all done. Thank you everyone for coming. Remember, there will be no February Lunch with the Leader and you will get information about March um, in a timely fashion. Okay? Thank you all. Bye-bye.
Thank you.